Okay, it looks to me like we're on the dot at 6 o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone, to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March 4th, 2014. If you could please, everyone stand, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance first. Ms. Embick, if you would, please do roll call.
Commissioner Stephen?
Here.
Commissioner Kirby?
Here.
Commissioner Lawson?
Here.
First on the agenda will be just approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes, any questions, comments, or I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approval of minutes. Then next would be the minutes from last time, which was Tuesday, February 4th. Has everyone had a chance to look those over, and are they okay as written?
Yep, that's true.
I agree. And then I will move to approve the minutes of February 4th, 2014.
I second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Being there, no old business. This evening, what we have on the agenda is a public hearing. It's, I'll just go and read this real quick. It's SD 14-01. It's a request for preliminary plat approval to allow a new manufactured home park to be created at 2180 32nd Street bypass. The applicant is Dwayne Rigg of Rigg Properties LLC, the property owner. Have any of the commissioners had any expertly conversations regarding this matter? No. Neither have I. And to let you know, if you want to speak on the matter, you need to be sworn in. Being sworn in does not mean that you have to speak. But if you think that you are going to at all, if you would come up to the podium there, and we'll swear anyone in who wants to possibly speak on this. Okay. I state your full name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth on penalty of perjury. Thank you. Okay. And before we hear from the town, I just want to explain to anyone present and anyone watching, with this type of hearing, we are not the final deciding body. What we do is just make a recommendation, and then, I'm sure you've probably been told this, but then it goes to city council, and they make the approval or nonapproval. We just send a recommendation to them. And we do ask that anyone who does speak, if you would, when you come up, because this is televised, if you would speak into the mics so that the people at home, and we actually do have people who watch, can hear you, and if you would state your full name when you come up to the podium to speak. So we'll go ahead and start with the town going ahead and getting an overview.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, and all members of the public who have attended. This is subdivision 14-01, and it's at 2180 32nd Street. The applicant is Dwayne Rigg, and it's the preliminary plat approval for a mobile home park. This is a different sort of thing than a normal subdivision that would include regular homes, because it's going to be all one commercial lot where he will rent the homes out. It's not going to be sold by parcel to the individual homeowners. According to the Land Use Code, it has to be at least one acre in size, and any parcel where two or more manufactured homes are located is considered a manufactured home park. And there's different, there's the manufactured home subdivision, there's a manufactured home park. This one falls under the manufactured home park category, especially because the lots are leased or rented. They will not be sold to the individual owners. It has to comply with the subdivision procedure, which is why you have drainage plans, you have paving plans, you have lighting plans. That's Section 3.3.1S, subsection 3, is the reason that they had to submit all of this This property is zoned residential C, and it's intended to accommodate higher-density homes, home residential situations, and it's also zoned for a mobile home park. The previous owners of the property had brought this idea before, a few years ago, and that's when it was zoned residential C. This is an aerial view of the location, the purple, let me change the focus a little bit. The other way. There you go. The purple section is the property that will be developed in this manner. You'll notice that to the south, there is other commercial activity going on, on that side of 32nd Street. This is a zoning map. The brown is residential C, the blue is residential B, and the yellow is residential A. The commercial district that's along Highway 15 is near the property, but it doesn't touch This is facing west from the subject property. This will be the entrance to the park. This will be the drive that they will use. It will not be a town-maintained or town-owned street. It will be a private street. This is 32nd Street on the right of your photo. Do you need me to turn the light off so you can see better?
Seems okay.
And this is the other, facing east, where the entrance is and will be located. This is the existing manufactured home that is on the property. It will be used as a manager's residence, so it will remain, it will be one of those 16 spaces. This is facing east, showing more of the lot, and you can see the existing residence in the upper right-hand corner of the photo. The approval criteria for a preliminary plat is a little different than the other things that we've been doing in the latest hearings, and so I'll read them out for you. Whether the proposed subdivision furthers the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan, if it complies with the standards and design requirements of this land use code, it must provide a water supply system sufficient in terms of quantity, dependability, and quality to provide an appropriate supply of water for the type of subdivision proposed. And in this case, they will be getting their water from the town, so they didn't have to supply their own water. They will be having it metered and purchase it from the town. The same goes with finding number four for sewage. They will be tapping in, they've been reviewed by the Town Utilities Director, and they will be tapping into the sewer system. It has plenty of capacity for their use. Number five, whether the proposed subdivision is compatible with the soil, topography, drainage, and other natural features and physical conditions of the site. And we also have the town's floodplain manager here to ask, answer any questions about drainage that you have, because the property is, as of yet, undeveloped. And number six, whether the proposed subdivider has the financial ability to complete the proposed subdivision in accordance with all applicable federal, state, and local laws and regulations. This case is a little different than it would be for a subdivision, because in a subdivision, the town would assume control of the streets, curb and gutter, that kind of thing after it was built out. This case, we will not. If the developer never moves forward with this plan, there's no loss to the town. And also, every mobile home that's moved into the town has to get a moving permit, so it has to meet the town's requirements, it has to meet the water and sewer hookup requirements. There's no way they could move forward with moving those in without coming back to the town for permit. So we did not request financial proof of capital or loans or anything in this case, because it's different than a traditional subdivision where people would be buying the lots. This will remain, you'll notice it only has one address, and the spaces will be numbered 1 through 16, because it will remain one private lot. So if they never move forward with the development after this meeting, or after it's approved by the council, there's no loss to the town. And there's no future expense that could be incurred by the town, because it is one single piece of private property. It is the staff opinion that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval, and we find on all of the criteria that this subdivision and mobile home park, manufactured home park, meets all of the land use code requirements. Do you have any questions, or was there a photo you'd like to see again?
Yeah, I have a question. I didn't completely understand what you were saying about criteria six, the financial ability to complete the proposed park in accordance with all applicable laws. It seemed to me you were saying that you decided that criteria doesn't matter, or...
No, let me go back to this one. Manufactured home parks have to be developed according to subdivision procedures. And you'll notice on the bottom of this one, if any conflict between dimensional standards applicable to subdivisions in general and those applicable to manufactured home parks, the latter shall govern. This has to go by most of the standards for a subdivision, but in this case, because it's not public infrastructure they're putting in, because it's not a street that the town will end up being responsible for if they don't finish it, then in this case, that doesn't apply, because they can't move forward with this project without meeting our standards. And if they don't move forward, there's no loss to the town. Where this number six applies is, say, for instance, a subdivision was created and platted, and they started half of the infrastructure and never finished. The town's stuck with a half-built street. So that's where the subdivider would have to have proof of financial responsibility to finish the project, or be insured, so that if they defaulted, the town could then finish the streets, the sewer, the water, that kind of thing. In this case, it's one piece of privately-owned property. If they never finish developing it, it doesn't affect the town. They have to pay for water and sewer taps for each home they move in. They have to complete the proposed plat before they can ever get a water sewer tap, a moving permit, any of that. So if, for some reason, they tomorrow lost their financial ability to develop this, it would just remain raw land, the way it is now. That's what happened with the previous developer. They never moved forward with their idea, and so it remained raw land. And that would be what would happen in this case.
So it does seem to me you are saying that this criteria doesn't apply. In other words, we shouldn't pay any attention to this criteria. Is that right?
Not necessarily. It does apply because their financial ability, the proof of their financial ability, is working with the town step by step for the next phase. So if they pay their water and sewer tap for the first home they move in, then they're showing that they have the money and they have the financial ability to keep developing this. If tomorrow, they come in and, well, not tomorrow, but after the council approves it and everything, they come in and they apply for a water and sewer tap, they have to pay upfront. So that's proving that they have the financial ability to complete the project. And their standard of meeting that is less in this case, but it still does apply to them. And the checks and balances that are in place to make sure that they complete things with the, in compliance with the land use code and the state manufactured home inspector come in down the line in this case instead of upfront. So it still does apply, but in a different way.
So if it applies, we need to make a judgment about whether they have the financial ability or not. Is that right?
In a different way than you would if it was a subdivider that was coming in to pave streets.
Yeah.
Yes.
But we still do need to make a judgment about whether they have financial ability?
Yes.
But we don't have any information on that?
The applicant is here. He can answer questions you have about that. I'm sure they've secured a loan or have capital to move forward with the project.
But we don't have any information from staff on that?
No. And because the staff is secure in the fact that they can't move forward if they don't have financial ability. That's meeting our requirement. Because if they never move forward, there's no loss to the town, wherein a normal subdivision there would be.
Yeah, I understand that, but this criteria doesn't seem to say anything about loss to town or anything else. It just says, "We are supposed to make a judgment about this."
Yes. And that's because it has to follow the subdivision criteria, and it's not always a perfect fit for every case.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question based upon what we just discussed with Ms. Kirby. And that has to do with, if we're approved, and they get a water meter set and the sewer hookup set for 1 through 5, are they required to do all 15?
No, ma'am. Because if, say, they ran out of money after they did 5, that's fine with the town, as long as they have the entrance lit the way they said they would, and the fencing done the way they said they would, and the landscaping done the way they said they would. If they only end up with four homes, that's fine. And if they want to do 5 this year and 4 next year, that's fine. But they have to have their drainage in place to move any in there. So they have to have their drainage, their streets lit at the intersection, all of the things that are in that site plan, they have to be complied with before they can begin.
So the streets, the sidewalks, the drainage ponds?
Yes, especially because the fire marshal wanted to make sure that there's a turning radius for their engine. So even to have one home there, they need to do the paving. And you can ask their engineer, I'm pretty sure that would be one of the first steps to be done, is the infrastructure.
And the other question I have that was not covered in the material provided for us, and normally it is the lending agency's concern about flood insurance, since a third of this property is in flood zone A, flood insurance is required. Is that...
And that's why we have Mr. Malaney here. He can answer all of those questions for you.
Thank you. I see where, when it's a mobile or a manufactured home park, it states that they need to be set forth, if it was a manufacturer home subdivision, but yet you're, when I'm not finding it here, I know subdivisions say they have to be a minimum of five acres, and you said one acre, but I don't show that in the code.
Let me, I have mine...
I can't find that in that code underparks.
I have mine with me, if you'd like me to look it up for you.
I got on page, I don't know if you have the same one, but it's 6.316S, I think.
Yeah, I hope we can see where the acreage limit is. It's in the definitions section, and there's a definition for a manufactured home park and a manufactured home subdivision. It's the beginning of your land use code. Would you like me to look it up for you while other people are giving their testimony? It's in the definitions.
Okay. No, I believe you.
This is the definition out of the land use code of a manufactured home park, because I thought that question might come up, because there is shades of difference between them.
Yeah, I was hoping that you presented that, because that answered my, one of my questions.
Yes, the subdivision is meant to be sold off as lots. This will be a park.
Right. They said a park, that they need to meet the requirements of the subdivision unless otherwise stated. Yeah, I just didn't see in all the other parts of the park where it talked about one acre anywhere, so.
Okay. Well, I just found the definitions, manufactured home park is a tract of land at least one acre in size, et cetera.
Screen that I have for you.
Screen.
Yeah.
And then, I noticed in, you know, you talk about contacting the fire, et cetera, et cetera, but I also noticed that because this is a preliminary plat, I don't see where the schools were contacted. And it says that they need to be contacted for a preliminary plat.
And this one did not.
Okay.
Other agencies...
It just says, including...
Yeah, if they're affected, and they are not.
Okay. And then the map, the scale has to be, because this was actually a different size, and this has been reduced for us?
This is for Mrs. Weber, she prepared those for you.
Okay, so we have to, I probably haven't seen that, this video, hold on here. You talked about that there were, you know, no costs in terms, they have to pay for their own hookups, et cetera. Are there any side costs whatsoever to the city for something like this getting started?
The only thing that we've been looking at is working with P&amp;M to maybe help with the streetlight. Other than that, it's just a private development.
What about schools and busing and that sort of thing? Is that a factor or not a factor?
I don't believe it would be a factor. I'm not sure if a bus went there, because it's so, probably the Harrison Schmitts.
I think it's close. I've never seen a bus pick up there.
Yeah, I'm not sure which elementary would be involved, but the high school and La Plata, I don't believe there's a bus. But I could look into that for you and present that at the council meeting, if that's something that you would be concerned with. They did have a, not a traffic study done, but a traffic impact analysis.
And then, are you all stating that they do meet all of the criteria in terms of, you know, spacing to, not just the other properties, but between the homes, et cetera? That they have met every criteria?
The fire marshal is fine with it, and they do have parking room for two vehicles at each space. And they also have their open space requirement met.
15%, I believe.
And they also have some room for some landscaping, too. So, and the fire marshal did review the spacing between the homes, and they will have space for two cars to park at each home.
I guess maybe the rest of my questions will be for them at the moment, anyway, but, okay. Did anyone else have any questions for the town? Oh, no. Should've looked. Okay. All right, and I believe maybe Mr. Rigg will be presenting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, okay, just, anybody who wants to present. Oh, wait, first, we have this other letter. Do you want me to read that, or did you want to read that, this letter that came in late?
It came yesterday, and if you'd like, I can read it into the record, because it was not part of your packets or your staff report.
Yes, please.
It is from neighboring property owner, and we received it yesterday. This letter is in reference to your correspondence dated February 10th, 2014, concerning the preliminary plat approval for a new manufactured home park owned by Rigg Properties LLC. Because of health reasons, I will be unable to attend the scheduled meeting. The purpose of my letter is to ask that my concerns be noted. I am an owner in the Kentonata Creek Mobile Home Park, which is a residential home park for individuals over the age of 55 and located south and west of the proposed project. A letter I received from Weber Engineering stated 15 new homes are proposed on the property, plus the existing home, for a total of 16 homes. I spoke to Mr. Rigg, and he indicated that he would not be purchasing new homes, but would be purchasing repose, used homes, and whatever he could find. He would then be renting them out to tenants. As a mobile home park owner, I have developed strict guidelines concerning the mobile homes that I allow in my mobile home park, in an effort to maintain an attractive and desirable neighborhood. I am concerned that another mobile home park of used unsightly homes added to the outskirts of Silver City will further blemish the image of Silver City. In addition, I have a low water crossing with culverts immediately below the proposed site. With the excavation necessary for Mr. Riggs' project, I'm concerned about increased water flow, silt, and debris, such as yard waste, garbage, and vegetation blocking my culverts, and possibly causing roadway loss or damage. Thank you for consideration of my comments. Spangler Motors Incorporated, DBA, Kentonata Mobile Home Park, Patrick Spangler, President.
And this would be the only communication that you've received from the neighboring?
Yes. And as far as the town's answer for his concerns, we do have standards for mobile homes, manufactured homes, that's the requirement of a permit, and they have to have a HUD seal, they have to be newer than 1976 to have a HUD seal, and they have to be skirted. There are requirements for these to be moved into the town. And as far as the drainage questions, Mr. Malaney can answer those better, but we do have the drainage plan that they've provided that shows it would not be affecting other property.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if you would like to go ahead and come up and present.
My name is Pamela Weber. I'm with Weber Engineering. My husband and I have a small engineering firm, and he couldn't be here tonight, he was out of town, so it's just me. Jamie did a good job of summarizing everything, but I can give you a brief overview of what we've looked at and what we've worked on with the town on this project. As you've seen in your packets, we have just one main road coming in and a cul-de-sac, and we've met the town's requirement for the turning radius that the fire department requires for the cul-de-sac. And we've worked with, we got a traffic engineer to look at some existing data that exists for this area for traffic, existing traffic that's on 32nd Street bypass, existing traffic on Cano's Offspring Road, and what the projected increases might be because of the mobile home park. And we determined that there was a very low impact based on existing traffic conditions and also projected traffic conditions that the mobile home park would cause. So there were, there wasn't anything we had to do on 32nd Street to mitigate any traffic, because it was minimal at the peak. What they looked at is the peak hours of the morning peak traffic and the afternoon peak traffic, and how your new development would affect that peak flow. So we were impacting the peak flow very little. The road, we worked with the roads, we looked at the road scanners that are required by the town's land use code, and we worked with that and made that fit with the site. We tried to do as very little earthwork as possible, and just try to make the shape of the roadway fit to what's there already. It has some fairly gentle slopes. It is sloped from the east toward the west down to the arroyo, but it's very workable. And there's a large pile of dirt that the previous owners had placed there, that some of it lies within the 100-year floodplain, and we'll be getting that out of the floodplain as per budget requirements. And kind of just reshaping it on the existing site, but just following that same grade that's there. The maximum slopes for mobile home pads would be about 5%, so it's fairly gentle. I've had a cough all week, I'm sorry. We looked at incorporating the landscaping along the north side, and both to help buffer the side from the road, and also to help buffer the road from the side, so you don't have that just immediate visual contact with the roadway. So we incorporated the landscaping along that edge. And then on the south edge, we looked at putting just a privacy fence with slats, just a chain link with slats in it to help block, both give the southern owners the privacy and also the homes along that side some privacy. and also the homes along that side some privacy. There's a lot of vegetation along the arroyo here, and so that sufficed for giving that visual barrier from one side to the other along the arroyo. The development is staying completely out of the floodway, and we're doing the minimal development within the floodplain, and Bud has the information on the requirements for flood insurance and within that. But mobile homes are very conducive to sit within the floodplain because they're elevated anyway, and you have to be at least one foot above the, there's flood elevation for the floodplain requirements, so mobile homes are very conducive to that. They also have to have a permanent, you know, tie-down, a permanent tight foundation, like you would see if you were going to convert it to real property. So, those homes that are in that area will have to comply with that. We have sidewalks along the outside of the roadway as per the requirements, and then we were able to provide the parking room at each home. The sizes of homes that are represented on your plan that you have, it's, we just use kind of a larger standard, sixteen by eighty, although the homes might be a little smaller, but we wanted to try to fit more of the maximum size home, and we put a little bumped-out porch or entryway on it so that we can make sure we had enough room on each lot. And the minimum spacing requirement between the lots is fifteen feet, but we gave a little bit of extra, sixteen feet from the, from the actual porch to the other house, so there's more than that between, from home to home, there's more, a greater distance. The bottom area, the west, or the bottom of the site, which is the west side of the site, is where we incorporated the detention ponds, and we did a maximum of two feet of depth, and they're designed to drain out the water that enters into them at the pre-development rate, so that we're not increasing the runoff downstream. So, that kind of addresses one of some of Mr. Spangler's concerns, because of the drainage policy and the land use code, we have to keep that extra runoff on-site and let it out at the pre-development rate, so we don't increase any runoff downstream. So, we looked at the ten-year flow, the hundred-year flow, and we've just sized those ponds so that the, so that we're not allowing any extra runoff, it's just what runs off right now. So, those detention ponds address that concern. He also had a concern about the, any siltine or debris that might enter the creep from the site, and because the site is bigger than one acre when the earthwork contractor works out there, he will have to file what's called an NPDES permit, a National Pollution Discharge Elimination, something, I forget what that means stands for, but they have to file this, the contractor has to file the permit, and he has to comply with erosion control requirements, he has to have what's called a SWIP plan on-site, and that stands for Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, and that's in place to prevent those kinds of things where you don't get soil migration during a storm, and because you do have all that loose dirt out there, you have to keep it on-site. So, they have to install silt fences along the edge of their working area, or something to catch that loose debris. So, silt fence, there's the black, they're about two feet high, that you might have seen along road construction, or the, what's called wattles, it's the straw, the big giant straw worms, but straw kind of rolls that go along the bottom of the cuts or fills, or the fills, that help catch debris, or straw bales, sometimes they'll use straw bales to catch it, but you have to have catchments in place to catch that soil. So, so those requirements are already in place, and that's actually a national requirement. So, those are already in place to help control those kinds of things that he's concerned about, and that their contractor would have to comply with as a, as just a matter of what they normally do. So, those, those should be addressed, and there wouldn't be any construction debris going in the arroyo or anything like that, so that all should be just the way that, those controls are already in place, basically. Do you have any questions for me?
My first question is on the map. The one you have is the accurate size, so that when I see one inch equals twenty feet, that equates to that map that you have?
Right, and then the eleven by seventeens are the one inch equals forty feet.
Okay. So, how much, part of the code says that there needs to be fifty, at least fifty feet, let me, so I can read it exactly to you. Along the front of the property, or the front property line, how long is, like, from corner to corner of each lot? How long is that distance? Like, as we're facing the street, the front of the lot by the street?
And the individual?
Yes.
Some individual, this line to that line?
Right.
That refers to the entire piece of property in this case, so...
Because it's one property?
Yes, because they're not individual lots, and they won't be split out or sold as individual lots. So, the frontage of this piece of property is the entire line that meets 32nd Street. So, it's well over fifty feet.
Okay. What section is that? I'm not in the section that I have.
That has some of the inside ones. From being too close together, and in this case, there's one driveway.
And then it also talks about needing appropriate size for bringing in a home and removing a home out of the drive and making the turn. Was that taken into account? Because it looks, just from the length of these homes, I don't know if they were all sitting here as they were, or on this design, how easy it would be to get one in or out of one of these drives.
It will require some maneuvering, if you can do it. To answer your question, those are, the more uniform lots are forty feet, even though it doesn't apply, but just so you know, they're forty feet.
Yeah, it's marked on the front. Okay.
I have a question, and can you hold it in? I'm a little concerned about drainage runoff and all of that myself, because right now you have grassland out there that's holding a lot of things in through its roots, and as you grade, which you'll have to do slightly for each of these individual fifteen additional living units, is there going to be any kind of, what's going to prevent that ground from just now being free to go in and clog up your drainage ponds and look through your silt screens?
During construction, or are the homes...
During construction, and even when they're in place, if they just stay raw dirt.
Right. During construction, the contractor has to do maintenance if we get a big storm event during monsoons or something, if the silt gets built up behind the fences, or if he has a blowout in one of the silt fences, he's going to continually monitor that as part of his SWIP plan, and also the ponds should be constructed first before he even gets started, so that they will provide a catchment, but he does have to continually, if a lot of silt has marched in there, he's got to keep it cleaned out so that he's not allowing any silt off the site. So, during construction, those controls are in place, and then as the site is developed, we had talked about what kind of surfacing they might want to put on the site to help even, you know, for their benefit, even to keep the mud from, you know, people chucking mud in and out of the house, since they're going to go on the homes. And we've talked some about some gravel, or maybe some wood chips or something of that nature, but just something to help stabilize the ground, so those are the kind of things that we've looked at for stabilizing. The slope of the land would be pretty gentle, so you wouldn't get a lot of high emulsivity because of the, because the runoff running so quickly, and with the, with raw dirt exposed, it would tend to soak in a little bit more, but I know what you're saying, with the grass catching a lot, it does really slow it down, and it keeps it cleaner. So, it's something he has to work with the site after the homes are in place to just keep it stabilized. Thank you.
They'll have their own yards, so some might have grass, some, but there won't be any raw, I don't want any raw, just dirt anywhere near the homes. So, something will be around all of the homes, you know, around the, in each yard will have its own, some type of grass, or rocks, or, you know, the wood chips, something to make it look nice, it just won't be raw dirt.
What will the driveways be?
We would be putting some, just a base course behind the sidewalk. The curve of that will be the shorter kind, mountable curve, so you can drive across it. So, potentially all of that area behind the sidewalk would be the driveway, so we were going to put about ten feet of base course back there to help really stabilize the area that the cars are coming in and out of. And then beyond that, as you get from the mobile home, so here's the vehicle, so from the mobile home back would be where you'd have the yards and the more kids' family material.
And there'll be no parking on the street, then?
Correct.
How are they going to accommodate guests? I guess what I'm asking is, you have to have twenty-two feet on your street, and that does not include parking. And it looks like you have the twenty-two feet, but no extra. How will they accommodate people who, obviously there's two cars, some people may only have one, but reality is, a lot of people have two cars for themselves, and then they have guests come over, where are they going to park?
The vehicles running forward a little bit, there would be room for another vehicle to come this way behind the sidewalk, or if they pull the vehicle forward, there'd be room for one behind it, but maybe potentially someone, there's not going to be a no parking sign, so I guess potentially someone could park in the road, along the edge of the road, not in the road, and it just creates more of a narrower street at that point while that vehicle is there. Most people go slow.
Also, because it is one, the private property, they may make a park rule about number of vehicles you could have, or something of that nature, to eliminate somebody parking six vehicles at one spot.
Well, that obviously becomes a safety issue, because if people need to have an ambulance get in, if a fire truck needs to get in, et cetera, that's the reason for the code. So, I would think something would need to be done to guarantee people not parking on the street.
As far as a park rule?
Or?
There is a little bit of parking, there's a little knuckle for extra vehicles.
If I interpret that maybe wrongly, that to mailbox units, that that's where the all the mailboxes and the postal delivery would be, right to there, not at each individual?
Right, it would just be one of the unit boxes.
I am going to go ahead and follow up on, as a starter, on whether the proposed developer has the financial ability to complete the proposed, but also with the maintenance, because according to code, it needs to be maintained. And I guess my, one of my questions is, one of my concerns is, we have, in the sixteen years I've lived here, we have pretty much the same population. This isn't a town that's showing growth. So, is there room for more housing to be developed than what we already have, when we do have some existing places, like, for example, the new one up on the hill behind, up above Hudson, that's not even, there's, I think, fifty lots, and that's not completely full at all. You have Dos Fríegos sitting somewhat empty, you have the one out across from Tyrone somewhat empty, and even though you say there's no cost to the city as far as, we don't have to put in sewer lines, et cetera, there is a cost to the city when you leave places sitting empty. And if, do we really have, I guess, do you have to have this full to maintain it? And how full do you have to have it to maintain it? Do you have any data that shows that you're going to be able to rent it enough to be able to maintain it correctly? And does the city have any data about the need for extra housing when there's already some empty housing out there?
I can answer, from our affordable housing point of view, the people who are in need of housing would be in this income bracket. They are not building homes in Dos Fríegos. But Mr. Ely, who does our affordable housing project, has people come in every day who are interested in affordable housing, and I know that most of the housing developments in this income bracket are full normally. It is the places like Dos Fríegos and those type of things that are waning, but we do have a large working population, and we are in need of affordable, quality, safe places to live for them.
And what about the one, how many have been built up on the hill here, where we saw somebody a couple months back from Habitat? They were building up there. Yes, I suppose Habitat can be building some up there, too?
They are building them. That, that's a little different situation, because the people, they're either doing it through Habitat, or they have to qualify for a mortgage. Those are, a lot of the people who are coming in to apply for that have been renting for a long time, and now they're ready to buy. So, that opens up another, it's a little bit of a different category, and they're building them as they go. So, it's not empty, it's being built, and they have applicants already for each house that comes up. And they do go one at a time, because a couple of them were Habitat, a couple of them were financed through USDA as a home mortgage. So, the town donated the property and got grants to do the infrastructure, and then individual, case-by-case basis, the homes are built. So, it's not empty, and Phase Two of the infrastructure is coming up pretty soon. So, so they're building it in little stages.
But for who would be moving here? Where would they be moving from?
Out of an apartment, or...
Or they would be opening up other places. It's not for growth, is what I guess I'm saying?
No, I can tell you that the list...
It's not coming in growth.
No, the lists for affordable housing are much longer than the lists for people who are building homes. So, it would most likely be current residents of the area, students at the university, small families, that type of clientele. For our homeowner rehab program, we have people coming in every day asking about it. So, it is definitely, from my personal experience at the office, a category of housing that people seem interested in, that there seems to be a need for, and it gives the renter a little more room for the kids outside than in an apartment. So, I would think that there is, it would probably fill an itch. Most of the mobile manufactured home parks in the area are full, and some of them, I think, have a waiting list.
Well, I mean, no matter what, if we're not growing, then it's just changing people from one residence to another, which means something opens up and it's not filled, so you have empty places. I don't, I don't see how that wouldn't be a...
I don't foresee sixteen, well, fifteen spaces changing that drastically. It's not a large development, it's fifteen manufactured homes.
Thank you. Just so I understand, Sharon, are you saying that there are mobile home parks already that aren't full? It seems you're starting out by saying...
I'm saying that if you're, if you're building something new in a town that's showing no growth...
No, I understand that part, but you seem to refer to mobile home parks already that exist that aren't full?
Well, I know that we saw another mobile home park a few months back, it was developing a few extra ones behind the Taco Bell area down there, they're going to have some new ones, I don't know how full they are at the moment. They're going to have some new ones, I don't know how full they are at the moment. I was just, yeah, I'm asking, are they all full? But even if they are full, I guess even the point is, even if they are full, we don't have people who are without a home that are looking to move into here. If people transferring from one residence to another, it's not a growth issue, a growth demand issue.
Is it demand on the rental market for affordable housing? I know from, this is not research data, but from my own personal experience, when I was a single mom, I couldn't find anywhere to rent that I could afford, and this would be in the category where I could have afforded, and I ended up living with my mother. So I think that's the niche that this would be filling. They may have somewhere to live right now, and this would open up 15 more spaces that would be affordable for that income bracket.
So it's not, it would be more ideal for them?
Yes. Yes, because in my instance, this would have been a great place to live, instead of moving in with my mom and her chihuahuas, so. So I, I think it is filling a need in the community for affordable housing in a safe environment. And most of that is not research-based, it's my own personal experience, so that's my disclaimer.
I have sort of my question suggested for both you and Jamie maybe. I realized this letter from Mr. Spangler, just apparently you just got it, although it was dated February 24th. But I'm wondering if, how, how each of you are together to think about this, and possibly communicating to Mr. Spangler, your replies to his concerns, because I think that might be just a very helpful thing to do, so, just a thought. I don't know whether you routinely, you know?
I did speak to him, he called and told me that he would be sending a letter, and I think maybe he wrote it before he was able to get it to the mailbox. So I think that explains the delay in the dates. And I normally will follow up after the meeting, so I can let him know. And it is available on CATs, that's why we're televised. So if he was unable, he can watch it on CAT, so we can email him the minutes, or we can take him the minutes.
I was just wondering if you, either one or both of you would actually contact him and extend them?
I generally do, yes. When people provide their contact information, I generally do contact them and answer their questions.
It seems like it would be maybe helpful.
Normally, the community development department recommends, or does not recommend, and it seems like you skirted it here a little bit, are, are you recommending it? I mean, I see that you have criteria, but it seems like you're stating, as we go over the criteria, that you feel it's met.
Mr. Russell prepared the staff report, and on the last page, he does give a recommendation to approve it based on the criteria that are presented. And nothing has happened since he wrote the staff report on the 21st that would change that. And also in my presentation, I recommend approval. So both Mr. Russell and I are in concurrence on that.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wanted to come up? I think we wanted to hear from, I cannot remember the name, I apologize.
Hi, my name's Bud Malaney, I'm an assistant town engineer with Silver City. One of the hats I wear is floodplain administrator. My duties as floodplain administrator is to make sure structures built in the designated flood zones of town meet certain construction criteria. The, it's not our intent to disapprove construction in the floodplain as long as the construction criteria is met. That goes back to when the town joined the National Flood Insurance Program. We agreed to follow FEMA building construction recommendations, and so we've implemented that. And we've actually added to the boilerplate rules and made it more strict in, in and around the floodway itself. A floodway is, by definition, is an area where the water has to flow, so no construction can happen in a floodway. And even if it's on private property, they can't build in the floodway. The courts have ruled that it's not a taking. It's policing our local community, protecting properties upstream and downstream from those locations to prevent impact. The city has implemented a policy of no adverse impact, which requires a developer to look at the pre-construction runoff numbers and compare that to the post-construction runoff numbers, and to mitigate the difference between the two. And that is done typically by detention ponds. Detention ponds typically, we want it to drain within three days to prevent mosquito growth or other vectors and nuisance stagnant water situations. In this case, the engineers looked at the pre- and post-development numbers, they've sized their detention ponds accordingly, and built them to the current policy guide that the city has. In terms of the requirement on flood insurance, that's really between the lender and the developer. If it's 100% financed by the developer, that's his decision or her decision to insure or not insurance, that's, that's their dollar. So, I mean, it's obviously, it's foolish not to have some sort of insurance rather than a homeowner's policy on it. Since our rental units, a renter could actually just get a separate renter's flood insurance policy and protect the contents of the structure, should there be a problem. Generally speaking, those renters' insurance is considered very affordable. I don't have any premium numbers for you, but the, the insurance numbers come down the higher you build the structure above the floodwaters. Typically, we require that the engineer design a foundation that will withstand the buoyant force of flooding waters and prevent the structure from flowing downstream. And that is assigned, a stamped engineered foundation. So that's one of the requirements we have in terms of approving individual sites in a floodplain. Actually, the state is responsible for inspection of manufactured houses, so there is a little bit of a disconnect there. So I ensure that the site meets the city's requirements before the manufactured house is even moved to the site. Do you have any specific questions that might be lingering, or?
Yeah, I'm curious, I'll probably show my intention, asking this question, but in determining the pre-construction, post-construction runoff, that's, is that an average runoff, or a 100-year flood runoff, or?
We define it as 10-year and 100-years, so the, the engineers look at both those situations.
And are these ponds designed to handle the 100-year situation?
Yes.
Okay.
And by the time we get into a 100-year, because we are already in low area here, it's certainly possible the ponds will become inundated with that 100-year flood event. But the idea is, we're mitigating the fast runoff that you had concerns with at the beginning of the meeting, where, you know, you used to have a grassland, now you've got developed property with impervious soil, I mean, impervious areas. So you do increase the intensity of that runoff, and the detention ponds mitigate that intensity, flatline it, so you don't get a big surge coming downstream. Is it going to be perfect? No, I, nothing's perfect. There will probably be situation where soil gets offsite, or maybe some grug material gets offsite. It will be their responsibility of the property owner or contractor to get that cleaned up. It sounds like downstream, there's been a history of problems already. Since we're developing upstream, more than likely, the property owners downstream are going to complain right away. It's just the nature, you know? We didn't have a problem until I started building upstream. And so the best we can do is implement these measures and try to ensure that they are followed through to minimize those complaints downstream. Pam indicated the NPDS is something that is actually monitored by the feds out of Dallas, so I've never seen a Dallas guy with a badge running around here. And the way that works is, I believe there's a state employee out of Santa Fe, and they're contracted to do the enforcement for EPA. And the, the site has to be logged in on their NPDS database for construction. One way we mitigate some of the runoff problems is you avoid construction during the monsoon. So there's some timing issues that are very critical to help the site maintain its integrity and keeping debris from flowing downstream. The SWIP measures are, are an EPA requirement based on the size and number of units and time of year that the structures are built. And there are boilerplate procedures that typically are followed. I realize that each site is individual, and they have to take into account those local considerations such as the slope, and is it all bedrock, is it caliche, is it allubium that they're building in? So the, the SWIP will have to address some of those issues, maybe not directly, but in terms of, like Pam said, silt fencing, typical runoff control procedures.
I just have one final question, and it's a post-construction question, five, six years down the road. Is there anything within the town to make sure that areas like this that have drainage ponds are being correctly maintained? The way the fire marshal makes sure that the grasses don't grow too high?
I don't believe there is.
So that's totally upon the property owners' recognitions here?
If it was a different subdivision, a larger one, there, there are procedures to transfer those ponds to the town, but this won't be the case in this site. Basically, it will have to be the nuisance complaints to, to get things moving in order to maybe do some maintenance or cleanup, and, and that's an unfortunate thing. Most property owners are concerned with their sites, and they don't want it to be run down and slum looking, so the best I can do is assume a very positive role by the property owners. They're not going to come in and purposely destroy something and make it ugly and non-functional. I, I trust a developer that they want to do it for the right reasons.
And the ponds, you mentioned like mosquito, et cetera, do they ever have the concern of developing an odor, and would that be a factor for the people who live on the other side of that property line right there?
Yeah, because of the drainage requirement, there shouldn't be an odor issue. If a line is plugged and you have ponded water in, in the pond, then they'll need to address the maintenance on that. None of the ponds by themselves are like a swimming pool. They all have a bottom drain that allow water to flow at a certain rate. And so they, in a normal functioning pond, after a couple of days, it should be totally dry.
And are there ever safety factors involved, like regarding children? I mean, how are the ponds?
These ponds, I believe, are only two feet deep, or something like that. I believe we only have to get into fencing issues once it's like five feet deep, or something like that.
Would anyone else like to come up and speak in favor of, first in favor of the project?
I'm going to be the developer, I guess. It is.
Thank you.
And I just want, want to let you know that I do have the financing all in place at First New Mexico Bank, and that I plan on making the, buying the trailers as new as possible, new if I can. I mean, I've gotten a couple bids for brand-new trailers. It all depends on how the infrastructure is going to cost. I mean, that's the main, that's the biggest part of my expenses, the infrastructure. So once that's done, then I can plan on how I'm going to buy the trailers. But the trailers will all be, most of the trailer parks in Silver City are rundown. They're 30, 40, 50 years old. Nothing's been done to them, because there's no codes to keep them up. But my park is going to be really nice. I live within a mile of the park, so I have to drive by it every day. I don't want to put anything in that's going to hurt the value of my property, or I have property around that, that I don't want to do anything. I wouldn't do anything to, to affect the, my home or the homes around it. I want it to be a nice place for everybody. Have any, have any questions?
Okay, thank you. And someone else wanted to speak too?
I have a few questions.
Okay.
We are across the dits in this property, we have a small business. And we've, in the past, it's been a few years, there was a renter in that single trailer you saw up there. I had trouble with theft from them. If we're talking about bringing in low-income people and rundown trailers and stuff, you know, we've already got a shady growth, and I don't know anybody that would like to put their business in that area particularly. If we can be assured, like he said, wants to buy new trailers, that's great. But I think we need to be a, we need, the type of people that are going to be renting there, I don't want to be having problems with on my business.
May I ask, where do you live in connection to the?
My business is right next to that fence, is our-
To the north, to the, or to the?
To the south.
Oh, to the south?
Yes. We have almost two acres there, which is our business.
So your business is this building here, looks like it has a variety of rooftops?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no problem with the folks there in Pat's trailer park there, they own their trailers. He just rents the land, is all he does. And it is an adult park, and they have water restrictions on dogs, kids, whatever. Of course, we don't have any problems there. But there was a renter about three years ago that was renting that double-wide trailer that was in the picture, and we had a discussion about it, his kids. And they were jumping over my fence and stealing stuff, and I caught them at it. I, I don't have to deal with that, you know, that's the problem. And someday, I'd like to sell that property, and I don't want the properties around it being much older rundown trailers. You know, somebody may want to move my building off of there and build a house there, you know? I mean, it's, it's possible in time, so I don't want to degrade the value of the property. I'd like to see that that's not done.
And you said you have a fence around your property, is that correct?
Chain link. But a pair of wire cutters will get you through it every time. And it's a real pain to put it back together once somebody cuts the fence. It's expensive, I'll put it that way. I just want to address those concerns, you know? If we're talking, we're looking to put low-income people in old trailers, you know, we can just look down the street and see what happens over there. I don't want that happening right next to my property.
Can I answer a couple of those questions?
You certainly want to address them, yes.
Do I need to stand up?
Yeah, yeah, we do, because as soon as we can get recorded, we're televisions.
The, the renters that were, he's talking about is before I purchased the property. I had to actually go to court to get them evicted.
I'd like to.
So I had, I had as much trouble with them as, as he did. Now I have, I've had two good renters in there, I mean, that's the, I'm doing it as a, as a retirement, as a, as a business, so I have to have good renters. I won't have, I won't have low, low income, I don't want that type of people. That's not going to do anything for the, I can't, I can't make money on low income with, with old trailers. I mean, that's not my, that's not my purpose. I'm putting too much money into the place to, to put old trailers in to get low rent from it. That's not my objective whatsoever.
Will you be putting into place any rules and regulations, like we had maybe mentioned earlier about parking on the street? Any sort of procedures you guys have in place in mind?
I haven't written it or anything, but we will have, you definitely have to have park, park rules. And they'll be, I mean, we, we want it, we have a business here in town too, Armstrong Forewell, so I know-
so I know what it is to have a business. We've been here for 25 years. And we definitely, I know how I want the park to run and the rules will make the strictest rules that we can to keep the park nice. That's our objective. Because I have property, just like you do, right next to it. I own property across the street on both sides and I don't want to devalue my property whatsoever.
And you also indicated that between your two individual pieces of property, you will have a screen type of chain link fence? You'll have a visual barrier so that the gentleman just spoke won't be looking into someone else's, you know?
Yes, definitely.
Back bathroom.
I think that's part of the code that you have to follow by.
Where's the height barrier? What is the height of the big barrier?
I don't know what. However, the code will be.
Looks like six-foot chain link, hundred cent.
I don't voice my concerns about that, you know? I'm not going to keep working there for a whole lot longer, I hope. I hope four or five years I'll get to retire and I'd like to be able to sell that property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, anyone else want to speak at all? Questions or comments? Open to any discussion? Or do any of the commissioners have any other questions for anyone?
Well, Sherri, I have a question from you. From your comments, are you, you seem to be indicating that you thought there shouldn't be any parking at all on the street?
Not from my comments, from, the book says you have to have 22 feet and the 22 feet cannot include space for parking. So, your street has, a two-way street has to have 22 feet and then if there's parking on one side, that has to be in addition to that 22 feet. Which, looking at the numbers here, indicate to me that there could not be parking on this street and meet that code.
So... The code would handle it, it's not something we would need to?
Well, that's a question for perhaps the help.
I think it's in the six-point, okay. Well, again, I probably have different pages than you. So, it's the S, letter S of the, what do you have? The 16, 3, 16, letter S. Internal streets and walkways, internal streets shall be provided to furnish principal traffic for safe and convenient access. And then, at the very last sentence, such streets shall be privately owned, constructed and maintained, shall meet all the following requirements. And then, the first one, A, part of that says, "All two-lane roads shall allow at least 22 free width, feet, free width. Space for roadside parking shall not be taken from this width." If it was a one-way, it would be different, but it's a two-way. And obviously, that's for safety, for emergency vehicles and things to have access. So, my reading of that and my looking at these maps tells me that there could not be parking on the street in this subdivision or in this park.
I don't believe that the town looked into that because it is a private...
This is under the statute of parks.
Right. And so, I think that may be why the town didn't look at it because the fire marshal looked at it, even if people are parked on both sides of the street, a fire engine can get down it. What he was concerned about was the turning radius at the end. So, maybe they might paint that no-parking fire lane or make provision for that. Because all the fire marshal looked at, I believe, is that a fire engine can get down it and turn around. So, one open lane...
Right, and parking on both sides, if somebody's coming one way, it can slow them down. I mean, that's the whole reason for the code. The code is there regardless of what the fire marshal said. The code is there.
Right, so they could alleviate that with maybe some no-parking areas? If you would be open to that, if that's one of your concerns? And you are allowed to approve it with conditions. So, if that's a concern for you, you're, if everything else seems to meet your approval, you can make a condition about that if it's a concern for you. And then, we can look at it and have the information for the council hearing. And that's one of the great parts of having the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Council and the town staff look at it so that we catch everything we can possibly catch because everybody has a different point of view and different things they look for. So, that is a great reason to have hearings before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Council.
Any other questions?
Could you just describe to me really quickly? I forgot to ask about the open spaces. Are they more or less going to look exactly like they look right now with trees that are there? Some of the open spaces are going to be, look like? The required open space, it has to be a percentage of the lot. And I noticed you have that percentage. What, those are just pretty much going to look like what they look like as far as the current existing trees that are there? It's going to be added and changed?
Right.
Well, how wide is the street? Didn't you say it was 22? Right at the 22?
Correct, yes. 22 pavement and curb and gutter on each side and then the sidewalk on that.
Well, I'll start by saying that I think that obviously a whole lot of thought and care was put into this and obviously, you did a nice job of checking into codes and knowing the background before, you can tell that a lot of detail has been addressed and I thank you for that. And thank you for your presentation. Looking at my list of questions, I think I have five over. Garbage pickup is going to be through the city and it'll be in front of the houses?
Did you decide with Peter Pena? So, that would be a question for Peter Pena?
Okay. And what were the lots sizes again? Just the individual sizes roughly? Like, what would it be, the smallest lot size?
40 feet is the more uniform. Wider than the wider ones, or wider than that. And then, the depth is, sorry, let me get over here some mic. 40 feet wide. There's one dimension on the, if you look on sheet 1-A, there's one dimension that says 37.38, but that lot really is 40 feet because part of the dimension is where there's a C8 below that. It stands for curve eight and you have to look over to that curve table. And so, part of that linear, it's no longer linear, it's in that curve. So, the surveyor included it in that curve table, but it really is 40 feet wide there to kind of make a distinction with that. So, 40 feet is the minimum width and then the depth is about, they're a bit variable because the property lines aren't completely rectangular, but about 110 to, they get longer than that. The shortest one down at the pole stack at this end is, this length is 88, 88 feet right here.
On one side?
Yes, on one side. That lot's wider and better, so we had a few blocks that we did double lines on because they accommodated a little bit better.
I may have a partial answer to your question that I can do a little more research on. The subdivision, where it states that any conflict between dimensional standards applicable to subdivisions in general and those applicable to manufactured home parks that latter shall govern, that may be why the question never came up of the street width.
No, it's under parks.
Right. So, that may have caused the confusion of why it never came up before. So, we can definitely look into that and we speak to the fire marshal and the public works director.
I don't understand why you say it would have come up because the requirement is under parks.
I think because of the volume of information that they looked through, that may be where it wasn't noticed until we came to the hearing today with the reports that they reviewed and everything. Just with the sheer volume of information.
And I know that you notify people within a certain amount of space. This also goes in the paper two weeks ago, right? Is that correct?
Our notice, we get the legal notice to the clerk two weeks before. It's on the town's website as well.
So, anywhere in the adjacent neighborhoods beyond those, you would still have had a chance to see it in the paper, potentially?
Yes, and then the large yellow sign is posted on the property that's visible. So, anybody who drives down 32nd Street, I've had several people ask me what the large yellow sign was for. For Mr. Spangler.
Anyone want to have any discussions on conditions? I would like to consider the condition of no parking along the street for, I mean, maybe in the circles at the end, I guess the fire department has to be able to turn around there, but the concern that it would not meet the code. And if people were parked on both sides and somebody was coming along, you could slow up and cause a trouble for an emergency vehicle coming in. How does everyone else feel about that?
Well, I feel like the code says that there can't be any parking, basically, and that we can't really go through every item in the code and see if this meets it. We kind of depend on the town to do that. And this is apparently one piece maybe of the code that, I don't know what the town may have said if it looked at because this does meet the code as long as they don't park. So...
Can I just talk for a second? I think we're required to have two parking spaces off-street. I know we're required to have two parking spaces per home and we did make them off-street so they weren't parking in the road, so that met the letter of the code. But you're right, we do need some extra parking for visitors. So, we have met, we have met the code because we did, I did talk about that with Peter just to make sure that we were getting enough, you know, getting the parking that we needed for each home. But when you asked me the question and I was really talking, I was telling the way this, I think we could move, just shift each home a little further back on the property so that you get the two homeowners' parking spaces on the side. And then, we could accommodate, I think we might be able to get at least one, but maybe two parking spaces parallel to the road behind the sidewalk if we just shifted the homes back just a little bit. So, I think we can accommodate that off-street parking for guests at each home behind the sidewalk and just indicate it in the next drawing, but it's doable. And then, we can make it work.
By park rules of only so many vehicles allowed at each place. I know a lot of places that you rent from, you have to list your vehicle license plates of the people who live there and then you're only allowed so many guests. So, that may be something you could cover in your regulations.
As part of the lease, do that in the lease agreement, pretty much. People are only allowed, you have to figure who come on Friday.
Bike racks, yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, to speak to what you were saying, Sherri, it seems to me a little funny to put conditions on that are basically you have to meet code.
I think just encouraging residents by putting it in the lease as a reminder so they're aware of it because people aren't aware of that.
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah.
Just making them aware of that's all we do.
In terms of our, I mean, we could also say, you know, approval on the condition that all of these items in the code are met, but you know, that's kind of the town's staff's job to see if they are, I think. Anyway, that's my thought about that.
And there's another one on the commissioner's show that we've satisfied the approval criteria. I think that we've already had a definite discussion to satisfy the free provider water supply system sufficient. The next one down, sewage, we've already had that covered and it sounds like that one's quite adequate. With soil, topography, drainage, sounds like that has been addressed and will continue to be addressed as the project would move along. How do you feel about 1, 2, and 6? Sounds like the design requirements have been met, number 2. Number 6 sounds good. I guess number 1 would be the one that we just need to make sure. And that would be under our purpose, 1.3, section 1.3, the purpose of zoning and all the rules and to promote and protect the public health, safety, peace, comfort, general welfare while allowing for cost-saving efficiencies. Like, for example, the ones I highlighted to just double-check for this evening's, to protect and improve the established community character of the town and the social and economic stability of existing residential, commercial, and other land uses. Promote planning, good planning practices, prevent adverse impacts of development on the availability of water, et cetera, which I don't think we already addressed that. Encourage a more efficient use of land and public services. I do think that, you know, having, I think this is even zoned, as you said earlier, for smaller space, for more dense, and that's what, this definitely meets that criteria in my mind. I don't know that safe and efficient transportation really is a factor here. Promote alternative land development practices that promote, again, that's not too much of a factor where that was going, and then reduce the sprawling development that results. And again, the fact that this is a more dense project seems to address that. How does everyone else feel about those?
I think they're fine. Yeah, I think it's in furthered the goals and policies of the town's conference of plan. I didn't have any issues with that. So, I'm ready to move that. We recommend approval to the Town Council, this request for a preliminary plat for a new manufactured home park to be created at 22... manufactured home park to be created at 21832nd Street bypass.
Do we have a second?
I have seconded the motion.
Seconded the motion, okay. Any follow-up discussion to those motions? Guess the only thing I would like to state is I do want us to be really... Everyone to be remembered and reminded of the concerns in the room by this letter and by the other gentleman who spoke, and I think that they are extremely important concerns that need to be... We need to be considerate of always, is, you know, affecting neighbors and being respectful of neighbors. So I would like to just kind of add that, because I think we do need to really know that that's an important concern, an valid concern, and everyone should stay very, very aware of that concern.
It'd be good if it's brought to the town council.
And this will come to the... Again, I think I said this at the beginning, but what we do here is simply a recommendation, it's not a final notice. This goes before town council, and they make the decision. We just send a recommendation all the way together. So if there's no other discussion, I think we can call for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Stevens? Commissioner Clements?
Aye.
Commissioner Furby?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
So approved. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for... Everyone who came and spoke. All right. Next on the agenda, we have no new business. We have no community forum, and perhaps we can kind of have a discussion of that in a minute here with the reports from commission... Reports from staff?
We do not have anything for the April agenda, so I don't know if you'd like to do another firewise presentation. I think you did it in April last year, or if you'd like to cancel the meeting.
Not in the last two years. Where I was that prepared, and they prepared the meeting that's happening.
Yeah, so that seems kind of... Oh, yeah, that's right. There's another thing going on this Friday in the community.
So I have nothing on the agenda for April.
So how does everyone feel about not meeting in April then? We don't have any forums, so... Okay. Reports from commission? And I guess I'll just address real quick while we're talking. Does anybody have any ideas or anything you'd really like to see addressed in a community forum? Because we can request for a department to come and visit. I think we put in a request a while back for which department to come talk to us. Some months ago, we asked if we could get a department to come talk to us about... Was it the... Was it the water department? I'll try to remember.
Okay. And if you do... If you would like to, I need to have the meeting publicly noticed, so if you think of it in the next couple of days, otherwise...
And we could do it for a few months out of the run, but just if we can remember it and put it on an agenda, maybe, because it would be nice if we had maybe some of the various departments that are factors here come and present.
I will have ICIP public meetings coming up, so those... Alex Brown will be with me at those again this year, so that kind of generally answers a lot of people's questions about certain departments.
Okay. All right. Community input, it sounds... Looks like we don't have any now.
We're still on reports from the commission.
Oh, do you still have emails from the commission of anything?
Well, I just thought it might be more since we're on TV emphasizing that we have one vacancy on this commission. And it's really important that we fill it, because each one of us can't always be here. So, yeah, so I think it's just important to get that, the word out.
And add to that, we had a discussion earlier, and you do need to be in the city limits. And the other thing is, I assume... We might want to check into if there's an age. I assume you just have to be of legal age, 18 or older. So you would be open to anyone who's a community member 18 or over, I believe. But we might want to check into the age requirement.
I don't believe that there's anything about age.
Okay. In that case, just being in the city limits. Anything else?
When you were talking a little bit ago about what we might want to learn more about, because it keeps coming up in my mind, is in making these decisions, we're making them on the use of the land or the use of the property, but then go forward to the people who spoke today and their concerns about what happens, what does it look like over time? I'd really like to understand more about how our code enforcement works in Silver City.
Perhaps you can give us a little from the enforcement division, how...
Okay. Peter Russell is also their supervisor. They are within our department, so I can ask him about that. And maybe that might be something we could do for April.
That would be good. Do we want to meet in April and have that?
Well, let me make sure with Mr. Russell, who'll be back in town Monday.
Okay, so if we can get them, we'll meet in April. If we cannot get them, maybe they can do that in May, and we'd meet in May then. Okay.
And we do have two officers that are employed by the town.
And anything else from the commission? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
And so who?
I'll second that.
Oh, David Purge?
Aye.
Thank you.